Evening, everybody.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hi, Pat. Hi, Mayor.
Hello. Okay, I think we're six forty-six. Liz, are you expecting anybody else?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I will call the meeting of the Board of Control of the City of Fairview Park to order at six forty-six.
I'll read the role. Councilman William Minnick.
Yeah.
Finance Director Single.
Here.
Director of Law Riley.
Here.
Mayor Cooney.
Here.
And I'm in attendance also. Thank you.
Okay, first item is old business and approval of the September twenty-first, twenty twenty meeting minutes, which was distributed with the agenda. Are there any revisions to that? Are there any questions about the minutes? If not, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes.
Don't move.
Thank you, Councilman Minnick.
Second.
Thank you, Director Single. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so the minutes of the September twenty-first meeting are approved. We have new business, and that relates to the Ariel Tree Truck. The lease was approved by the board on August seventeen, twenty twenty. Director Castell, if you can explain to us what the what the issue there is, please.
Absolutely. In August, we had discussed a number of trucks with this company, and we decided on a seventy-foot boom. It's a little bigger truck than some of the other quotes we had. And this particular truck was located out of state, and the contractor failed to mention to us that there was going to be an additional freight charge for the delivery to Canton, Ohio, which is where their offices were out of. So I needed to add money. And in addition, I had cited the quote for the smaller truck. We ended up going with the larger boom truck. I quoted in the minutes four thousand ten dollars, and it's four thousand hundred and fifty dollars per month, so that needs to be corrected as well.
Okay, thank you. So we would need a motion to amend the meeting minutes for the August seventeen, twenty twenty meeting to correct that, and then I think we need a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Minnick. Is there a second?
Wait.
Okay, Director Single, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we would need, I think we would need a motion to approve the rental at the new, that that price, the forty-two, forty-two fifty a month, as well as the one-time delivery fee of twelve thirty-seven. Is there any? Is there any discussion on that matter? If that's, if not, then I would ask for a motion approving the rental of the truck at that. I'm sorry. Ask for a motion approving the rental of the truck at that forty-two fifty a month lease rate, as well as a one-time delivery fee of twelve thirty-seven.
Don't move, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. A second, Greg. Okay, any discussion or any questions? Okay, we will. All those in favor of of that motion, please. Yes?
Aye. Aye.
Would you take a roll call, please?
I couldn't.
Okay, I, the motion carries. Director Castell, any other new business items?
That is it. That's all for today's agenda.
Okay, anybody have any other items they'd like to talk about today?
I have one comment. You know, we're splitting our service department workers with a random piece of equipment. And they just love it. In fact, maybe when you think about purchasing it, because it's
Yeah, well, I haven't bothered to ask. I know what the answer will be, but it looks like a great truck. We have a lot of work for them to do. I know they were excited to get it. And I think it's on the field, correct? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I commend him for the work he did in work, too.
Yeah, they're, the tree, tree guys have been doing a great job, and there's a lot of work for them, and I know they're anxious to get it done, so.
Very professional.
We might be, we might be coming back, Bill, for another another meeting on that truck, so.
It's what there is, that's right.
Yeah, all right. Let's take, I take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Councilman Minnick. Second, Director Single. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening, Mike.
Good, Mike. Mike.
How's it going?
Good, yourself?
What's up, Bill?
You draw the bear, Mike?
Yeah, a little bit. I'm trying to emulate our mayor.
Yeah, well, you're gonna look, you're gonna look old like your mayor, so you may wanna you may wanna shave it off now. It's gray now. It might have been red or black in back of the day.
I'm going for Pat's distinguished look.
Ah, thank you very much.
Well, seven o'clock. Should I start the finance committee?
Sure.
All right. Yes, committee will start today at seven o'clock. And our first item is ordinance twenty thirty-four, the sale of the twenty-twelve bonds for the Gemini Center. This was on second read last week, and the motion to remain in committee, so all the questions or comments could be addressed. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right, well, seeing none, I'd like to play some motion to have this on third read and final passage next week. Mike?
Actually, I, actually, I do have a question.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, the last time I spoke to the mayor, we were just, they were just lining this legislation up is for an opportunity for, uh, Pat, it, Mayor, are you there?
Yes, I am. Yeah, so that's, that's what we have discussed.
Right.
Yeah, so what we were asking council to do is to give us the ability to to refinance the bonds, you know, at a, at a, at a rate or at a situation that would be favorable, you know, favorable to the city. You know, Matt, Matt Stuzinski is on the line here, and he can speak to that more directly, but the thought was that we, if the council gave administration the authority to do that, we would begin the process, and you know, and Matt could give you the timeline of what it takes to get this done. It's, it takes some time. And then, again, always looking at the rates to see that they are favorable to the city, similar to what he had presented you know, at the last committee meeting, so.
I was under the assumption that we were, we were gonna line everything up with the ordinance, bring it to the brink of passage, and then wait for an opportunity to pull the trigger on it.
But it just remain in committee until the perfect timing, and then we put it on third read and final passage? And amend anything we would have to?
I think I might, Matt, if you wanna help.
Sure, sure, sure.
I think that without a limit, I, limit our ability with the underwriters. Unless, if we didn't have the legislation passed now or next week or in the near future.
So, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll jump in here. Thank you, Councilman. Good question. You know, the challenge is this. The timing of these refunding bonds and the prep for this can take up to sixty days. You know, the markets move rapidly, and the markets move in our favor and out of our favor. All we're trying to do is make sure that we get all the ducks in a row and everything approved, and move down the path to, as you mentioned, take advantage of an opportunity should have present itself, but be positioned, have everything shelf-ready, so that, so that if the market moves, and the market is in our favor currently, we could pull this together very quickly. Well, quickly means sixty days to get from legislation through the, we'll call it the development of what's referred to as a preliminary official statement, which is gathering a lot of information that, then we go before the rating agencies. That takes about a month's period of time as well. So there's a lot of work to do to get to the market, and if we start down that path, which is fine, and then we're delayed to go back to council because of whatever reason, that can work. I'm not saying that it's impossible to do, but what we were trying to do to get, is to get council blessing by way of the legislation, then start down the path, because we are going to start to incur, you know, some time commitment and some expense in getting things ready to move forward. We just want to be shelf-ready so that we can take advantage of the marketplace that currently exists, and hopefully will continue to exist over the course of the next couple, three months. As I said, it takes about sixty days to get fully ready to go to market, to get all the information together and get through the rating agencies, and that's the part of the challenge right now, is making sure that we queue up to get in front of the rating agencies in a timely manner. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, we are queued up. I mean, this, this ordinance has had two readings. Just needs one reading for the final passage. So you would, you would, you think it's to our advantage to just go ahead and pass the ordinance without even knowing what, what type of deal we're, we're going to get?
I can understand your concern. That's, we certainly would not proceed unless we have very favorable and council, we've been watching this for three, almost four years now. We are not going to, we'll call it, miss the right window of opportunity to proceed. We've been patient, you've been patient, very patient for a very long time watching this. We don't get multiple bites at the apple with this. The good, what we've attempted to do is queue this up so that the legislation is in place, then proceed down the sixty days or so to get ready and have it on the shelf ready should the market present itself. Perhaps come back to council with a report or an update as to where we stand and what the current opportunity looks like, and then proceed if it is favorable. But part of that, we'll call it starting process, is getting the legislation we'll call it passed, so we know we can proceed with the refunding should the opportunity present itself. Does that make sense?
It does. Yeah, I mean, it's, you're basically asking us to give, for council to give its final approval before you proceed, though.
It is the case in every situation where there's a refunding that I've ever been part of. Council approves the authority to proceed. We can always, again, give you guidance as to, on a regular basis, as to how the marketplace is, we'll call it, positioned, and what the opportunity currently looks like. And again, we're not going to proceed and waste this opportunity. This has been, as I mentioned, council's been very patient looking to, we'll call it, capitalize on the market when the window is right. And I understand what you're suggesting is that council is authorizing the opportunity to proceed. I think it's been, I think it's been, we'll call it, well-managed to this point to be patient and continue to be patient to make sure we capitalize on the right opportunity. And I think that's everyone's mission is, remains the same. And I give council credit for being as patient as they have. We see, we've seen dozens and dozens of dozens of other municipalities and school districts proceed with a taxable refunding of Series two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen bonds because of the current market environment. Fairview Park Schools, I think I mentioned on the last meeting, is ramped up to give, to proceed with a taxable refunding in the next couple of weeks. We're just trying to, we'll call it, get in the queue with everyone else, and we want to make sure we have the, we're shelf-ready to go.
Once this passes, how long is that kind of window open for? How long should we keep it on the shelf for?
So we talked to bond council about this, and typically what it amounts to is that as long as the council elected officials remain the same, the authorizing body remains in place, and there's no material change to the authorizing body, that legislation can sit there for a year or two before it sunsets. But if there's an election that has a material change to the elected officials, that has to go back to the elected officials to revisit that legislation, so that new body can, we'll call it, either rescind that legislation or revisit it at that time. But it can be in place until the next election cycle. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
So I struggle with that just a little bit, that we're gonna create an authorization that's basically open-ended. And I understand that we're doing it for what is best for the city, but what this council believes is best for the city and what administration believes is best for the city may differ significantly six months, twelve months, or a year, or two years from now. So if we're talking through the next election cycle, that's kind of concerning for me. Do we need to put, and I guess I'm posing this to the entirety of council, do we need to put a cap on how long this authority will last? Is anybody else feeling a little uncomfortable with the open-ended authority?
I see it more that we want to make sure we can take advantage of rates that are low when we can, which if sixty days is the soonest we can, you know, possibly move on it, so be it, because I think obviously the fear for many people is we have no idea what might happen with the market with, you know, a presidential election taking place and whatnot. So I feel as if, you know, we don't want to miss a window where things could be low and then incur four years where we don't get as favorable a rate. Right now, you know, might be the more ideal time to be moving on this. Would that be correct, Matt? Is that part of the thinking?
It is. No question. We're, we're asking council to consider this because the market opportunity is favorable at the moment. And, look, as I mentioned, it takes time to get all the data, all the data gathered, compile the official statement, get in front of the rating agencies, and then ramp up the sale. So again, we started down this path in March, of course, and the market was disrupted, and we've been waiting for the opportunity to return, and it has, and is in fact better today than it was back in March. So you're absolutely right. The window is there. We're trying to move quickly to make sure we are positioned to capitalize on it. If the market is in the same place it is today, sixty days from now, we're gonna have, we'll call it, this, the numbers that I presented to you last week are, will be almost identical if the market remains the same as where it is today, so.
Because what, would it be fair to, right now is one of the most favorable markets we've ever had, correct?
It most certainly is.
Yeah.
These taxable municipal bonds are very attractive to the investors, investor sentiment. It is, we'll call it, historical rates. We say that over and over again. But rates are lower today than they were in March, and we thought rates were low in March, so we are at historic lows. You can handicap all you want, whether or not rates are gonna go lower, but there's not a lot of room for rates to go lower. We say that. We've been saying that for a number of years, but look what it's taken for these rates to get low. This low. It's taken a hundred-year pandemic to push rates, and then we'll call it disruption to the economy. Even back in two thousand eight, nine, and ten, we didn't see rates as low as they are currently. So it is a unique opportunity that's presented, that's presented itself. We just want to move quickly to get ready so that we can come back to council, give you an update when we're ready to go. Council can, you know, make, give their wage that we're, we'll call it, weigh in with their opinion as to whether or not that seems reasonable, but if we have to start the cycle with legislation at that point, we may miss a window of opportunity.
Just to be clear, Matt, the legislation cycle's already begun. I mean, the ordinance has been read twice, and it we're just, it would just need another reading, but I get what you're saying.
Yeah, we understand that. It just, we wanted to make sure that when we start down the path, that council is comfortable, and we have council's blessing. And we have council's blessing to proceed. Going down this path and then being disrupted, we'll call it after 60 days. Should we not have a consensus? And I can't speak to that. But if council does not feel favorable at that time. You know, then we wasted 60, 90 days of getting ready to do this. It's basically making sure that we have guidance from council that they're in agreement to proceed.
If we have passed this and then in 60, 90 days, things change, how will you know if we've already passed it? If we no longer support it?
Well, we could, I can come to council and let, let you know what this, the market is, what it bears. And, you know, we'll see if there's, see what people's thoughts are.
Legislation or would, what would we do?
Legislation has already been passed.
We would delay the sale. There's nothing that obligates this to proceed. And if the market is disrupted, we will not proceed. Again, council has been very patient, as has the administration and woke up getting this ready to go. We will not proceed. That's my role to guide the city as to, we'll call it the right opportunity. And again, I think the city has been patient and waited judiciously for this window that again. Is only here because of a pandemic. We can be patient and wait if there's some disruption. There's nothing that obligates the city to proceed. And I think as the mayor started to mention, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. But it would be our thought to come back to city council, give an update, say, we're done with the official statement. We've been through the rating process. We are poised to proceed. Here's where the market currently is. Should we proceed? And I think that would be, we'll call it good protocol and a good chain of command.
I agree. That's exactly what we would do. It, you know, the, it's just one of those things because of all the, you know, all the obligations you have to do and to get ready. You don't want to, you don't want to have something slow you down at the end. If there, you know, we had a huge disruption in March with the pandemic. You know, I mean, granted now we could do Zoom meetings. There's a little more flexibility. But if something again comes up that, you know, disrupts us, we don't want to lose an opportunity. And I plan, you know, as we go through the process, we'll let you know where things stand. With the rating agencies and, and also, you know, Matt will let us know what the market's bearing. And, and, you know, we can discuss it as we're, as we're proceeding.
And Mayor, if you don't mind, we can make that decision up until the day before the sale of the bonds. If the mayor should happen on a Monday, suggest that the market's in good place and we're positioned to proceed. And we expect this type of interest rate. And by Wednesday, there's some disruption, we can postpone and we will. I mean, that is, but again, this, these are, these are big decisions with a big financing that is not going to be wasted.
And it's like any other, you know, buyer sell transaction, you can stop it at any time. If you, if you feel the market necessitates, correct, Mike?
That is correct, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we would need to pass it then to anyway. We can't keep it in committee and you come back to us in 60 days and then us pass it.
Well, you can do that. I just don't think it's a, you know, I'm listening to Matt and I, I agree with him. I just don't think that's. The prudent thing to do because we may miss an opportunity. You know, in the event there's not a meeting, if it's a fifth, you know, there's five Mondays in a month, you know, something. Where we're not going to be getting together, you know, as again, as the time is, you know, as we get closer, we'll be keeping you updated. So I.
Is, perhaps I can ask the question. Councils express some concern. Is the concern that there, that we would proceed with in an adverse market? Can you help me with what the, what the pain point is or the concern is? I, I guess.
Matt is so, is Sarah so eloquently stated, I'm just, I'm always concerned when councils ask to pass something that is, is open ended. I mean, and, and, and it, it sounds like, it sounds like you see an opportunity coming on the horizon and. You know, if you actually need it passed.
My concern, Councilman, is that the opportunity is here today. And we're trying to move as quickly as possible to, we'll call it align all the pieces, parts of the puzzle that need to be in position. To capitalize on a market that's already in front of us at the very moment. It could slip away from us in the course of a couple of weeks. What we're trying to do is get all the pieces, all, every, all the protocols in order so that we can proceed judiciously.
So Mike.
Yes.
We could always pass legislation taking this back if we had to or, or like there's a. A way to come back if six months, 10 months, whatever down the road. Given that my concern and yours is the open endedness, we could revoke the authority through legislation, could we not?
Imagine we could.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I'm comfortable passing it now. Without the restriction, as long as, you know, we have that legal authority later down the road. If, you know, a year from now, we feel like we need to revoke that. You know, if we're moving the next 60 days, I have no concern over the open ended authority. I just don't want it sitting there for two, three years.
I think, I think Matt's point, he was asking, answering Brian's question is, how long could it stay open? And that's, you know, the council, bond council's opinion is until there's a, a significant change on council. I, I, I don't think we, you know, I don't think the market's going to allow for that type of extended period. But man, that's, that's where your expertise.
So you know, so you're right. There, no doubt you have the wherewithal to rescind the legislation at council's discretion.
Right.
And you can do so two months from now or six months from now or whenever. That's clearly at your discretion.
You can repeal an ordinance anytime. Yeah. So that, that power is there. So shouldn't be a concern about that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? All right. Then I think I would like to make a motion for it to be third read and final passage next week. Mike.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
All right. Sarah?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
I will say yes. And Greg?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. The second point in the finance committee tonight is ordinance 2036. The contract for city insurance. This was on first read last week. Any comments, anything?
Could we be getting an explanation from the administration on, you know, where this is coming from, what the updates are? Just any sort of introduction to it?
Yes, I believe. Counsel clerk Westbrook's talk with Mr. Greg Single. And we're going to have Patrick from McCowan at next, the next meeting, our next committee meeting to. You know, with information on the policies and the current rates, you know, a little more in depth information.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if there's anything else, when we get the material out, if there's anything else that you would like, just let us know and we'll. See what we can, you know, see if we can get there before the, the meeting.
Okay.
I just want to thank Matt too for his help tonight and throughout this process with respect to the refunding of Gemini bonds. So thank you, Matt.
No, you're very welcome. Thank you all for your patience. Thank you all for your patience. I know this is, you've been very patient for the number of years while monitoring this. So let's hope the market holds for us. It's a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to put ordinance 2036 on second read and remaining committee. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill? Sarah?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
I will vote yes. And Greg?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. And that's it for finance committee. We will conclude at 7:22 PM.
Great job, Bridgette.
Yeah.
All right. I would like to call to order the local government and community services committee. It is currently 7:23. So on tonight's agenda is the topic of racism and the council's response to it. So I'm going to start by saying that nationally, there is a growing conversation on the topic of systemic racism. And how it impacts communities. As a council, it is prudent to determine how systemic racism impacts our community in Fairview Park. And how we can identify enclosed gaps in our laws and procedures. To make sure that all citizens are treated fairly and given an equal chance of success. This topic was raised not for the first time, but most recently. When several members of our community voiced concerns on June 15th. That our citizens are not being treated fairly in the community. So I think what I'd like to do this evening, this is, to me, this feels like it's a big topic that could. Could take a lot of discussion. What I'd like to do is frame the discussion tonight. What is the council's end goal for the discussion? So in other words, once we're finished with this topic. What are the improvements, changes or results that we would like to see? And I want to bring it there so that we can take a look at each of our goals. And make sure our discussion is pointed back to those as we move forward. I think that would be great to have those boundaries. So I'm going to start by saying that in the end. I would like to make sure that all legislation in the city of Fairview Park has. Shows no type of systemic racism. So whether that means. We send our legislation under an audit or, or elsewise. I would like to make sure that we are not passing legislation that has any sort of systemic racism. Would anyone else like to throw out their goal or their thoughts as to how we should frame this discussion?
Um, Sarah, I think that your opening was excellent. I asked it to be on committee was because I felt that council did not address this situation because of break. Now, Mayor Coney did send out a letter shortly after our last meeting. From the administration. But I thought council should also address it. And if, if a letter is something that all members of council are not comfortable with. I am completely fine with that. That's something that I could work on with the members who are. Cause I know that several members did talk on it after community members and some did not. So I do not want to force a letter of response on anyone who does not want that. But I would like a statement from, to put out a statement. Saying what, what our steps will be. And I also would love to look into possibly some kind of HR for the city.
So your two goals would be that we release separately, individually together, however, a statement in response to what happened in June.
Yes.
Your goal is also to investigate HR practices and make sure that we are set up as a city.
Correct. Yes, thank you, Sarah.
Sarah?
Yes.
Um, I, I think you're absolutely correct in it. In that this is, this is a big topic and. And it, it deserves to be looked at in depth. And so I propose that, that we should, we should follow in Lakewood's footsteps. They have created an anti racism task force. That has appointees from both council and the mayor. And. They have. Their duties are to advise and work with the administration to ensure the value, value of anti racism is foundational. And unambiguously expressed in all city objectives, objectives involving safety, housing, education, culture and community wellness. I mean, we have some, we have some very proactive and very vocal residents. Who I think would do, we, we would, we would do very well by getting them involved in this discussion officially.
So one of your end goals then would be to create an anti racism task.
I think that would be a good first step in addressing all these goals.
Yeah, okay. So maybe that's the, and maybe that's the group that actually addresses them. Is that your thought?
Absolutely. Make recommendations to the administration.
Could we run that kind of like the charter commission runs? Yeah, something like that.
I, I believe Lakewood did. I think, I don't know if it was for, for appointees by council, for by the administration, something, something like that. But it's just, like I, like, like I said, it's just a way for us to start taking on this whale of a topic.
And that's where, Mike, I agree with you. You know, that's where start is the key word. You know, it's hard for me to state like entirely, you know, what we would say in a letter in terms of what our plan is. Because I think we first have to figure out, okay, just what you're saying. Let's figure out our goals. And then how we're going to go about doing it. Cause we could commit to saying we're going to address this issue. But how we can break it apart is huge. You know, and that's where it would even be helpful. And I believe you suggested this in the summer, Sarah, when we had a conversation. About educating us more, be it, you know, speakers who deal with this topic. So that we can really better understand just exactly what systemic racism is. And also doing some research, you know, like Mike is mentioning. To find out what some of the other cities and suburbs have done. Who might be able to speak to us as a group or even in a community forum type setting. To help us all get a better picture of the grandiose nature of this. But at the same time, where can we start? Cause we don't want to, you know, sometimes because it is so grandiose, you almost become overwhelmed and then end up doing nothing. So where can we start? And I personally would like to start by just becoming better educated on systemic racism itself within cities. And also finding out what other cities are doing to deal with this issue.
So I wrote down a much more simplified portion of what you said, which is further educate ourselves as council.
Right. And even, even the citizens, you know, that's what I'm saying. Be it us. Inviting to citizens to, you know, it might end up being a Zoom meeting. But some sort of a speaker or speakers plural to, you know, almost like a community forum. That city council is inviting people on this very topic so that we can all kind of pool our. Our, our insight that we gather from these speakers and, you know, just like suggestions. And I know we had, you know, a letter from Kelly DeBae Gillis. And one of the things she mentioned was establishing a HR department or independent panel to also help deal with these issues.
Could I jump in here?
Sure.
Thank you. Maureen, along the lines of community forum, I see Dr. Wagner's on the call. But the schools are going to be having a task force on diversity, equity, inclusion and social justice. Their first meeting is Monday, October 19th, which I think unfortunately may conflict with one of our council meetings. But I think that, and I've talked to Dr. Wagner a little bit about including the city and, and that discussion. Obviously everybody here would be welcome to join in that. Here at the city, we've looked to, to some programs. Like racial equity training with Cleveland Neighborhood Progress for employees. I see that Lieutenant Shepard is on the line as well. He recently had a panel. Of residents to meet that he met with to, to talk about these issues. And I don't, I'll let Lieutenant Shepard speak to that a little more in depth. But just to get a sense, I think for, for the police department and issues that some of our citizens may. Experience that the police are aware of, but also to explain why the police do certain, handle things a certain way. So I applaud him for, for doing that. I was able to join the meeting. It was a little late unfortunately. But he had a nice group of people there. And I think it's kind of, you know, I, it's important obviously to have these conversations. And because I think is, and I have the same, have the same problem. I'm not sure how to address them, but I'd like to also to see. And because I think is, and I have the same, have the same problem. I'm not sure how to address them, but I'd like to also to see action. So that our citizens, our residents have better opportunities if they've been, you know, a victim. Of racism or other, you know, opportunities have been lost. You know, as a community here, what can we do to help individuals overcome those type of obstacles? So we, we've, we've talked about it here. I know Director Costello has looked into some things as well as. Some of the other folks here, but so. You know, I think collectively we can put our heads together to work on it.
And I would hope the October nineteenth school presentation, we might be able to watch it after the fact on the community page or something. Would that be possible? You know, since we can't watch it. You know, due to our council meeting.
I was just wondering, is there anything you'd like to weigh in on? For goals you would like to see as we move forward with this topic?
Well, as I said, the, the purpose of me meeting with the group, the, the. Forum was to start conversation. I, I think what I came away from that meeting of, at the time, it was seven. And we have a few more that'll be at the next meeting was the, that we had more in common than we had differences. So if it takes us to sit and listen and understand the, the. Common things that we have and see where, what we can do to bridge our differences, that's very important. And also from the police department side is to educate the public why we do stuff. And also on our end. Educate our officers and our agency and the people that work for us. On why the public may feel the way they do for when we do some things. So it was a good, good starter. It's a, it's a long road. It's not something, this is, this is hundreds of years in the making. And we're not going to fix it overnight, but we're willing to roll up our sleeves, get to work. And make the best steps we can to improve the, the service we give to the citizens and what the citizens expect from us.
Thank you, Lieutenant Shepard. Before I move on, does anybody else have any goals they're interested in? Us taking on. And they may come as we have discussion, right? But I just want to make sure we're addressing the goals upfront. That we can always add to. No, okay. So this is a good start. I will say we did receive public comment from Ms. Kelly Dubay Gillis. And I'll read a portion of it. Where she says, I'm pleased to see that the city's plan to address systemic racism is on tonight's committee agenda. This is critically important work for all of you to be doing as elected officials who approve policies for our community and set the tone for what is and is not acceptable for treatment of all citizens. For tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask city council members to ensure that the discussion addresses the following, and I'll come back to that portion. And she says, thank you for your work in this important issue, as it will demonstrate to all Fairview Park residents that racism has no home in our community. So I'm going to go through her five questions. And because it's public comment, I want to make sure they're heard. I think maybe some of them are going to be simple yes and no, and some of them are going to be a little bit more in depth. So if I think they're a little bit more in depth, let's save them and we'll come back to them at the next meeting. I want to be cognizant of everybody's time tonight. So the first question is, what is the most recent information on the city's consent decree regarding discriminatory hiring practices? And what steps will be taken by the city to address the consent decree? So very quickly, Law Director Riley, do we have an update on that public records request?
The public workers request regarding the consent decree?
Yes, I know the courts were closed and we were having trouble getting some information.
Yeah, I haven't been able to get any of that, but I believe I've got a copy of the consent decree and I pretty much have all the documents to this point, so I don't know how important it is to get the court docket at this point. We have been in touch with the NAACP with regard to moving forward with the consent decree. So we've been going back and forth with some emails, but don't have anything in concrete. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Do you have the opportunity to respond to Ms. Dubay Gillis's request for public records then? Are we close to having the information we need to deliver that to her? I know she requested it in June.
Yeah, I'd have to look at her exact request and see. I thought I did send her some. If I have it, I'll look and see exactly what she wants. I thought that she just wanted a copy of the consent decree.
Um, you know, we can talk offline and figure out exactly what she wanted. I just wondered if we were close. So we can take a look at delivering her what she's been asking for then. I'll connect with you offline on the exact request this week. Okay. So the next question is, when will city council work with the mayor and the new police chief to hold? A town hall to discuss policing practices and policies? I don't think we know the when yet, but I think we can all agree that that sounds like something that we'd like to do. Is that correct?
I'd say yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is. And I think we, Lieutenant Shepard and I have discussed that and. You know, we'd like to actually have it in person if, you know, and that's one of the troubles we have here with the pandemic, but if time doesn't. Time goes on, maybe we'll have to miss a plan B on that.
Sure. Okay. So I will at least let her know that we plan to do it. Timing is currently being determined, right? And this can fall further as we have more and more discussion on it. So number three, has city council and the mayor discussed the need for an HR department or independent panel to address incidents of racism? So I think Bridget, you had said you would like to see. HR taken care of as part of this, correct?
Yeah, I would like to explore that as, as part of this. There are many different avenues we could take on that. That's something that we can look into for sure.
Perfect. So I will let her know that that's one of our goals as well. So question number four is what sort of equity training will occur for city employees and elected officials and when will this take place? I think, you know, I don't see a problem with doing that at all. Maybe that's something that our equity or that the anti-racism task force, should we decide to appoint it, could take on. That seems like a, a discussion that we should have in and of itself is to, to develop that. So. I'll kind of table that question for right now. We will come back to it. And then will there be an effort to conduct an audit of our community's policies to identify any that may have unintended or. Intended consequences of perpetuating racism? And that was my goal, number one, an audit to ensure that our legislation is fair. In all ways. So I think it's fair to say that we're going to work on that issue as well. So I just wanted to cover that. Go ahead.
I think that the last two questions kind of would also tie back to an HR person. If we had some HR person, they could. Line up classes and different. Things for us to learn from and also would. Address the, the last question as well.
I agree. So what I'd like to do, again, trying to be cognizant of everybody's time and knowing that this is such a huge topic. Is I'd like to take our goals, I'd like to write them out and chances are, I think. This is going to become subtopics for committee. Obviously, if we try to address all of this in one meeting, we'll be here all night. And we'll get tired before we get answers, right? So let me break it down and maybe we discuss each one of these goals in a separate meeting. To see how far we can push this. I, I don't think this is a one-time discussion. I think this is going to be a long-term perpetual discussion. So as long as everybody's in agreement. That's what we're going to do. We're going to take these seven goals, audit to ensure legislation. A written response to the June fifteenth incident. Investigating HR and making sure that our procedures are fair and that we have somebody who can address incidents. Considering or consideration of an anti-racism task force. How will we further educate council and the community? Encouraging conversation and finding what we have in common, which includes holding a public forum. So let's, let's take those. And spend several weeks really diving into this topic because. There's a lot here and how it impacts our community is, is very important.
Hey Sarah?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think if we have a consensus. On the anti-racism task force, I think we should go ahead and create that immediately.
Okay, so should I make the motion to create that? Is that?
Yes.
I'd like to know a little more about it. I mean, if we're going to have some.
I've been looking up Lakewood's and I see theirs and they have an application actually on their website. And then I was looking at some other cities and Bay Village has one, but they call there's a network. So it sounds like there's some other places doing like a very similar thing with like subtle differences. And so I think my first question would be like, would that be something where there's an application on the website?
So maybe what we need to do is take our next committee meeting. And turn, take that particular topic. And everybody bring, here's what I think the task force should do. And let's create a job description for them in the next meeting. So that we can then create it and move forward.
I just don't want to, I, I just don't want to drag our feet on. You know, taking some.
Well, what about? I was going to ask Lieutenant Shepard when the, when the next time he was planning to meet with his group is.
We have a, a meeting planned at the end of October, probably the third Sunday of October. I just have to firm that date up.
But Lieutenant, isn't that something you want that to be kind of a, is this your group? That's not something at this point in time where you want to open up to other, other people. I mean, correct?
Well, it is an informal group where we just started. So again. I would have to ask them if they, you know. We can open up, talk and see if they'd want to do more, but right now we just had our first meeting last week and, and. We're still trying to see where we're going with, with what we have right now.
I think our task force should be different than. Shepard is setting up. We might have some people who overlap, but I don't think that it should be, he has his own agenda for that and we're setting up. An agenda for ours. And specific tasks and goals that we need and want to see accomplished.
I would work and report to the administration.
Yeah.
Work with and report to the administration.
Yeah. So I think that what Kenneth Shepard is doing, I think is great, and I think it should be separate because he has his own goals and questions that for his.
Right. And his is going to be significantly more focused on police work. Which is important and valuable, but not the entire conversation. So we need a group who is focused on the entirety of the conversation. So Mike, if we were to appoint this or create this task force tonight. My concern is, what are the jobs, the duties, the expectations? What are the? You know, what is the size of the group? What is the requirement to be able to join?
We can immediately start working on the, some of the tasks Ms. Gillis has laid out for us this evening.
Sarah, why don't you send us the goals we've listed or heard today and then we can kind of rank them as a group about, you know, one through seven of. How we think we should, you know, kind of work our way through them. The task force is number one, that's fine, but at least we have. The first one to go with and then kind of, then maybe that horse gets some of those goals and then we work on some of those goals as well, but. I think to try to divide and conquer it as we go instead of just trying to, you know, spitball a task force here. I don't think that's a great idea either though.
Yeah, I'm all for a task force and then also council involvement, obviously. I just, I think maybe we should. Make sure that we're spending the adequate amount of time determining how many members, what are their roles, et cetera. So I'm comfortable with creating it, but we need to create significantly more. Parameters around it. So. You know, do we have any?
Why don't we make that an agenda for next committee meeting?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if rather than just say, let's make a resolution to have a task force and pass that tonight. And then if somebody were to ask me tomorrow, so what's entailed in this task force and how many people? I'd feel silly where I don't have any answers. I'd rather next, our next meeting, all of us could do a little homework as far as what other cities are doing. And our own thoughts on it. And then we could pull it all together. So that when we say we're creating a task force and discuss it, an anti-racism task force, we actually will have. It laid out what the goals are, what the expectations are and all the other details that go with it.
Could we have a committee meeting next Monday before our council meeting so that we don't let this sit for two weeks?
I mean.
About the task force only?
I mean, in fairness, we've let this sit since June.
That's a good point, Sarah.
Yeah, but we've let it sit since June, so that should be, let's get a little fire under our asses and let's get some stuff done.
We could have done a special committee over the recess and we didn't do that. I mean, we, we could have acted on it already and created a meeting during the recess.
Well, let's move forward now. That's what's important. Let's move forward now.
I mean, does everybody feel like four or five days is enough in time for them to? Do the research, talk to whoever they want to talk to in other cities and come together next Monday, the fifth? I mean.
We would create a task force for them to be, to participate in this discussion. I think we should go forward and with a concrete action and create the task force this evening and set them to work.
Well, like how many people are?
I'm uncomfortable.
Five appointed by council and four by the mayor.
I'm uncomfortable doing that right now.
I say for the next committee meeting and we'll talk about it then. That sounds like a good idea.
Mayor Cooney, why are you uncomfortable with starting this tonight?
Because I don't know enough about it. Like Maureen said, if somebody approaches me, you know, about this task force, I don't know what, you know, the stated goals are. I mean, I think we've done a good job in, in, in setting forth a number of goals. I think Sarah has a good list of those. And like Brian suggested that we, we take a look at those, come back, identify what we, what. Goals we want to, you know, you know, the administration is, wants to meet, what council wants to meet. And then set it, and then give that directive to the task force.
I don't disagree with you. I'm uncomfortable doing it this evening as well, simply because I'm a detail oriented person. And I would like to see the details of what this is, what it entails, what their goals are.
This group isn't going to be a concrete. Like these are the goals and that's it. This is going to be a fluid situation. There's going to be constantly. Things in this world that's going to change and shape this group. So to say this group is going to do these goals, here are the seven goals, find solutions, find what we're going to do. And that's it. That's, that's not, this might be a group that we have in our, in our city forever.
Well, but we could set it up very similar to how we do the charter review committee, right? Where every so many years you have appointees that come together and serve for, say, one year. To reevaluate and do whatever. Maybe the first task force is a two-year commitment. And, you know, because there's so much work to do now, but then every three years we reconvene one. So that we can review and make sure we are still making progress. These are all the discussions that make me uncomfortable with doing it tonight. Where I'd like to have a much larger discussion next week, once we've all sat down and thought through what does this task force look like in my head? And then all seven of us come together and we come to an agreement on that.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement. We want to have it, but I personally don't want to. Go forward tonight because basically I've had a half, half an hour or less to try and formulate thoughts. With, you know, seven different people talking. I'd rather. After tonight than, you know, this next week, write things down, do a little research, have some conversation. And meet before next council meeting to kind of have a checkpoint, where's everybody at? And we will keep moving forward. No, I don't think anyone's against this idea. But I don't see the urgency of just throwing a title of a group out there. We have no idea, or we do have an idea, I take that back, but where we have a little more of an organized. Thought process going into this before we announce it.
I agree. So let's. Let's come back next committee meeting and that will be the first subtopic that we jump into then on this greater topic of systemic resource. Racism in our response to it as a council.
Do we want to meet like Bridget, I think suggested a half hour early next week, we can kind of have as a checkpoint to see where we're at. And so maybe some. That's, that's up, what does everybody think? that's, that's up, what does everybody think?
Would we legally be able to do that as caucus or would we have to have a special committee meeting?
A good point, yeah.
This week is not committee.
So it has to wait.
Well, I think it'll be more concrete, you know, if, if it's gonna be a committee, we, you wanna have, you know, the law director maybe have some, you know, we have a shade tree advisory committee, we have a charter review commission. And we have different types of, you know, how, how, how is this gonna fit into the structure of the city? And those are the type of things that, you know, from an administrative standpoint, I want to have the time to review so that when we do get it in place, that it's, you know, that we have a solid foundation. So.
So law director, you could be sure to be at our next committee meeting and kind of find out a little bit about that.
Yeah, I could be at the next committee meeting. Are we gonna hold it before the next council meeting or is it gonna be two weeks?
I think we'll do this in two weeks to give it adequate discussion time.
Okay. I mean, as council president, I, I have the power to create subcommittees to, to investigate different issues. This is no different than, than putting together a subcommittee to investigate the issue of anti racism in Fairview Park.
Well, in all fairness, if you want to make your own, you can do that, but as collectively as a group, it sounds like everyone wants to be comfortable and know what we're gonna do before we go forward.
Right, but this is no different than creating subcommittees.
So how is that different than Charter Review Commission then? And I only ask because that was how we originally framed what the committee would look like. What is a subcommittee? Then.
Is this how, is that how we framed how the, the commission would look like?
Well, that was the very first thing was, you know, if we were to do this, it could look like the Charter Review Commission or another. I, I mean, this is kind of the idea. We have, we've had thirty-five minutes.
My suggestion was to mirror it after Lake Woods.
And I need time to find out what Lake Woods is about. You know, I need to, more than just tonight.
Talk to death. Fuck yourselves out.
Mike, can you go ahead and, and set up a subcommittee right now with, and you said nine people, five, four from the council, five from administration?
That's how Lake Woods is.
But we're talking appointed positions, right?
Exactly. I mean, Liquid is accepting applications. We could accept applications and then review them for the appointments.
Well, I, I, I want to know more about it before I start appointing people to something. I want to be able to have a good conversation with them about what I expect them to be doing. And I think we need to take time on this, you know, so collectively we're all on the same page. I think we all agree there's an issue that needs to be addressed. And.
It's, it's not that this mission will be capable of making, or taking concrete actions, mayor, they would be making suggestions to your, your administration.
Right.
Well, I think.
But what?
You can create your own, obviously, that's fine.
I mean, Mike, I can't stop you if you want to create it this evening, obviously. But I would just feel more comfortable with a little bit more discussion on it.
I think the majority of us would. That's what should matter.
Sarah, I know that Dr. Wagner's on the line. He would talk a little about a committee, a community event and input. I don't know if he, if he would, if he could talk to us about what the schools are gonna be doing, if that's, you know, I kind of could dovetail into some of the things that we've talked about today. If you want to have him do that after this committee meeting or, but I, I know that's something that he and I had talked about, including the city and and this, this task force that they're scheduled to meet in October.
Well, I think our task force though would be different than the school's task force as well.
I understand it'll be different. I just, I thought he could just explain what they're gonna be doing to give an opportunity to publicize this to the community. And I, I am, and maybe some of you on the line would wanna, you know, take part of that, but I just, that's why I mentioned it. I know, because we talked about a community, community wide discussion. And I think that's what the schools are, are, are aiming to do.
That's up to you, Dr. Wagner, if you'd like to weigh in and just give us that update or if you'd like to do it later when you talk to us about the school levy. Whichever you prefer.
Yeah, we happen to share with you just a little bit of information about it. We've partnered with the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio to put together a, a task force on diversity, equity, inclusion, social justice. On our website, we just put out the all call for participation and our goal is to cast a pretty wide net. And we want this to be something that isn't just necessarily school based, but really community based. And so the, the mayor and I have had several conversations about this and I've asked, you know, for him to share information. And so thank you for this opportunity. I apologize that our first meeting ended up on a city council meeting. I will guarantee that that will not happen again. It was just, it happened to be available with the Diversity Center and on, on our calendar here in the district and, and my apologies for that. But we will be planning to work with the Diversity Center. They will be facilitating the task force and pulling in all kinds of resources that they have at their disposal. Our goal is to, you know, work through a lot of issues that people bring forward in the community and explore those things and do more learning and talking. And then, you know, the real goal is to build an action plan around that. What sorts of things do we need to do? In a variety of different groups from, you know, the school district administration, larger group administration, city, you know, community, certainly student, parent, faculty, we're trying to really hit as many of those buckets as we, as we possibly can. So if you go to our website, you can see a, a link where you can see some information about it and then you can put your name in to, to join that task force. We anticipate we will be running it throughout all of this school year and, and into the future. So thank you for the opportunity to share a little information about it.
Thank you. That's really informative. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Dr. Wagner.
Thank you.
Um, so I think my recommendation is that we come back to our next committee meeting and discuss the anti racism task force at that committee meeting. Does anyone have anything else to add on the topic of racism?
I don't think that's a good idea though, what you suggested.
Okay, then local government and community services ends at eight P M.
All right, words and commission reports, Brian.
Nothing tonight.
Bill. You're muted, Bill. Can anyone hear Bill?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
No Boarding Commission report, Mike.
Thanks, Bill. Sarah.
Yeah, so my favorite teachers in high school told me to always bring a visual aid. So this evening, my Boarding Commission's report, I actually brought Dr. Wagner. I've asked him to give us a thirty thousand foot overview of the school levy. Because it is my plan to bring a resolution to council in support of this school levy. And I want you guys to know prior to me bringing that for us to vote on what exactly this school levy entails. So, Dr. Wagner, if you wouldn't mind giving us just a, an overview of what is coming up on November's ballot.
Absolutely, and thank you for the opportunity. I've never been in visual aid before. Sorry about, you know, but I do as, as well as I can. We have a seven point nine mil operating levy that the board has approved to put on the ballot for November. It will raise three point two million dollars per year. And a, as you know from our states of the community addresses over the past four years, we've been targeting the November twenty twenty election every single year. We've mentioned it every single time. Unfortunately, when a pandemic comes along unexpectedly, it really puts a kink in the timing. But we've timed it out at such a way that we really cannot delay. And so it is critically important. We sent, I believe Liz has the flyer and the facts on issue seventy-two that she has shared with all of you. It's been fourteen years since the school district has asked for new operating dollars. Two thousand sixteen was the construction project, two thousand eighteen was a renewal. So this is the first time really, actually since the class of twenty twenty, we're in preschool. It's been since we have asked for additional funds. So there's a lot of different things that are on that. It will cost the average taxpayer seventy-six cents a day or that breaks down to twenty-three dollars and four cents a month. And for about standard valuation of a hundred thousand dollar homes. And there's a calculator on our website that you can see or on that page, you can go, the Friends of Fairview Park City Schools, they're running the campaign. They've got information up on their website and on that sheet, you can, you can get to that information as well. It's really, this is a real critical one and there are some really key bullet points on there that people need to look at. One is to avoid double-digit reductions of teachers and support staff. We've been holding the line and trying to keep our class sizes low and it's, that's educationally, we're the best things that we could possibly do to help improve our student achievement. And that has happened over the past several years. We're not where we want to be, but we're making, making incredible gains. We want to be able to continue athletics and student activities. And if this levy fails, we're going to have to make up almost a two million dollar deficit. We've cut over a million dollars just this past year and we're still, we still ran fiscal year twenty twenty in a slight deficit as well, but we'd be looking at about two million dollars in deficit at the end of fiscal year twenty-one. If this levy does not pass, and that will require us to cut all athletics starting in the winter season. This, this winter's basketball and wrestling and all the spring sports. Until we get a levy going, we will have to suspend all of those activities. We're going to also have to have transportation cuts because it's a significant part of our budget that goes to transportation. And so right now we transport students at a, at a two mile radius from their schools. We would cut that down to, or I'm sorry, to the minimum transportation limit, which, which means we go out to two miles. So if you live outside two mile radius, then you would still be transported, but anything inside that radius would no longer. Right now we're using a one mile radius for that transportation. So a lot of people, we're a small community, a lot of people will no longer get transported to school. We want to be able to sustain those academic improvements that we talked about. And again, when you start cutting staff, you start increasing class sizes, you start seeing class sizes approach thirty or more per class size K twelve, things don't go generally very positively academically. We would, would like to try and avoid that. And finally, our technology is something that this community has prided itself on for a very long time. We've been a one-to-one district since two thousand six. Our current technology was supposed to be renewed two years ago. We've been stretching it now to five years. We'd have to go six years and indefinitely and depending upon when a next levy would be. So these are some very significant things that will have to happen, some immediately, and then some at the start of next school year. And we really are hoping that the communities, they've been so supportive of the school district over the past several years and it's made a true, a, a true difference in what we've been able to accomplish. And we'd like to continue to keep our schools strong and moving forward. So that's the thumbnail nutshell there. You've got the flyer and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, Dr. Wagner. I will tell you, I've been very impressed with the city schools over the last couple of weeks as my second grader sits beside me while I'm doing my work and she's doing her schoolwork. I want to say that Mrs. Ferris is a fantastic second grade teacher and I know that because I have been learning second grade science, second grade math, second grade English, right beside my daughter for the last couple of weeks. You guys have really done a great job taking a very adverse situation and figuring out how to make it work. And I think that that is to be complimented, just in advance of this levy as well. So thank you very much for coming this evening.
I am so incredibly proud of our staff and our teachers. They've done a tremendous job. They had to pivot very quickly in March when this pandemic first hit and we had to shut down from that point forward and over the summer, kind of retooled everything and they're doing such an amazing job. So thank you very much for that.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Wagner? Okay, like I said, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you.
Like I said, I'm gonna be bringing a resolution before council to show our support for this levy. Hopefully I should have that to you for the next committee meeting so that we can read it and then pass it prior to the election. That's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen?
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridget?
Nothing, thank you.
Greg?
Nothing.
Roll table. Ryan?
Nothing tonight.
William? I think I lip, I think I lip read yous. You said nothing.
I understand why I'm muted.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. Sarah?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Maureen?
No, just thanking Dr. Wagner and also thanking Kelly Gillis-DeBoy for submitting her questions. And Sarah, nice job handling the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Bridget?
Thank you. I just have one question. And it's kind of, I guess, for Liz. I know with the pandemic, nothing was done to get, weren't we supposed to attend something for sunshine laws? Do you know if that's something that I thought we, that was something we had to do this year? Do you have any, any idea about that or?
Okay, so every elected official is required to do the records, open records and sunshine training during the course of their term. So you have the four years to take it. I have not seen, I know when we were looking at bringing it in-house, they were willing to do a training. I know they had suspended that. I don't know if they have picked that back up, but I can reach out to, I was trying to do both the ethics. The ethics is not required. It's just a great workshop to have, one that Susan does, Susan Willicky. But I will reach back out to the Auditor of State's office. Actually, Auditor of State does one and I believe the Attorney General does one too, and they do it in numerous locations. So I'll see what that training looks like and if they have any upcoming so that people can attend it. Because that is, it is a requirement to have that done before the term is up and it is audited. So to, to make sure that you take it, they give you a certificate. So I will check on that and get back to everyone.
Great, thank you so much. That's it, Mike. Thank you.
Greg?
Nothing.
Liz, do you have anything else you want to share with us this evening?
I do not.
Come on. Mayor, do you have anything?
Yes, I had sent an email to, to council about the timeline for zoning amendments. We, you know, this is the first time since zoning, zoning changes by referendum was abolished per the charter where this comes to council. And we, we weren't sure, I had a chance to talk with Director Riley and with Commissioner Maynard about this. I know Council Clerk Westbrook's had sent a timeline. But we just weren't sure what council's preference was and how they wanted to address this. If they wanted legislation before they actually consider the, the zoning change request or if this is something they wanted to discuss in committee before asking for legislation to be submitted. You know, so, and I, I, there is, you know, I don't want to get into the particulars of, of a particular project. I just wanted to talk about it generally. And I, and I, you know, and I appreciate, you know, Liz has put all this together and I'm not, I just, we just weren't sure what, what the preference was. If you, if you went down the path of introducing legislation, but council wasn't in favor of, of a zoning amendment, you know, you know, we didn't know how you wanted to look at it.
There was my understanding, now that it no longer goes before the board, voters that that these, these zoning amendments would come before council in ordinance form. And that way, you know, we could then send it to committee and discuss the ordinance and the particulars of the zoning change.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
I, I guess the question would be that, you know, from a preparation to do it standpoint is.
I I guess the question would be that, you know, from a preparation to do it standpoint is, you know, the ordinances normally would come before you saying there's, you know, ordinance amending the zoning map, you know, to change from, you know, one district, general business, A one, whatever, to general business. But at that point in time, y- you're putting an ordinance up there saying that you wanna make a change, okay? And I I believe there should be probably a review by council as to, well, who's gonna sponsor this? Do we really wanna make this change? Because if if it never, you know, i- i- if it's a change that all seven council people are against, then why would you put an ordinance up requesting the change? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, somebody has to request that that change.
How, how would we, oh, go ahead.
Can you hear me, Director?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you, it's always been precedent, and ordinance is drawn up, ordered a council, placed on first reading, assigned it, and that's when discussions take place, once the legislation placed on first reading is discussed in committee, you can go either way, you can say yes or no. With all the years that I've served at council, at no time ever fail, it's always been in the best interest of the city to rezone a particular parcel. This would be the same procedure, the only difference is, it does not go to the residents, it's decided by city council.
I agree, Bill.
And I stand by my, my earlier email.
I agree as well, and I will say that when we were having these discussions, um, deciding whether that not, that should be changed in the charter uh, and deciding whether or not we were gonna send that to the ballot, one of the big sticking points was that each zoning change would get three readings for somebody to come in and and say, no, I'm opposed to it, um, that we required three readings to change those.
The hearing, I believe.
Yeah, so I think, um, I think it would make sense to send it via legislation and send it to committee then after.
The vote, the voters asked the amendment to change the charter, so I think we have this route to go before us. The council act on every issue before right now.
The question is, though, how does it get before council as an issue? I mean, you were, you were going from basically somebody, anybody could say, I wanna zoning change, and you're putting it in an ordinance. There has to be some review prior to that, because council does not have to put this ordinance up. There's no requirement. I can't hear you, Bill.
Do we not need an ordinance?
If you wanna change zoning, you need an ordinance.
That's what our, that's what the intention is here, this was referred to the P and D condition, referred back to city council for legislation.
Okay.
Uh, that's, so that council would review it, and if it was, they wanted the change, they'd vote for it or not, that's.
That's correct, mayor, we can go.
Okay, okay, I would just, we just wanna be sure we're.
Yeah, well, we need legislation, we need legislation to make a decision.
Okay, would you, would you be the sponsor of that, Councilman Minnick on that? Well, it's coming from planning and design.
As chairman of that, of that committee, yes, I've been a sponsor in every question. Unless, unless the council president wants to change that, but it always falls under the chairmanship of the Environment, Public Works, Planning, Zoning, and Development.
Okay, council president, is that, is that, is that fine? Okay.
Okay, you're, you're fine with, cuz we can prepare the legislation, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that no matter what, if somebody wants the, the the procedure you're following here is that, no matter what the zoning request is, it's always gonna come up as legislation in front of council. I mean, no matter if it's something that council will never even consider making a change on, you want legislation in front of council to vote on that. At any time.
Yes, we have to have legislation, Director, to vote yes or no on the rezoning.
No, that's, that's fine, I, again, we just weren't, we just weren't sure of the procedure, we understand that. I think, I think, Tim, you know, planning and design, if there's something that it's unlikely to be passed, it wouldn't be referred to council. Not that we do much of a review, because ultimately, the authority rests with council. But, you know, if it's something that's unconstitutional, you know, maybe it wouldn't come and get out of planning and design. But, um, okay, I I just think we all, I, we just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Right, during my tenure on the city council, the only difference now is council has the rezoning. The residents and the voters do not.
No.
Still have to follow the procedure to have legislation before us, so that we can act yes or no on legis- legislation.
Can I ask a question? Uh, did this already go to design and planning?
It did, it was just, really, it wasn't much, we, we just reviewed the projects and, um.
Okay.
It was referred, it was referred to council.
Okay. Only thing I would ask, if it's gonna be a committee, whatever was presented, um, at design and planning, if that could be like scanned or or something and emailed out to us.
Uh, yes, I, we, uh, I know Commissioner Maynard's on the call, I think we could ask the, um, developer to get something electronic pretty much, obviously, easier for you to review, and then also for the clerk to, uh, to to distribute it.
Yeah, that'd be good, and we can talk about it in the committee.
Okay. I would just wanna be sure, thank you, I just want, we just wanna be sure we're all on the same page before we went down the road and. And it's, it's, we have a good road map, so thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Um, I just wanna note real quick, uh, on that timeline, I did, um, mark uh, in regard to the ten-day notice for public hearing, I said that that mailing is done by the building department, um, it is actually done by council. So that was my mistake, though I do get the list from the building department, because they have, uh, generally, I've already talked to Lee, and she said she pretty much already has that list because they have to use those same parameters, so that's kinda ready to go. So, uh, I just wanted to make that correction, and also, um, let, I know, somebody just mentioned about getting information on the actual rezoning. I did send out, I think it was last week, um, the application and the documents that were given to P and D. I know you're looking for something more detailed, but the basics is in that, you know, I sent out.
Yeah, they, I think, uh, there was a narrative that was sent out, but there are plans or site plans, um. Yeah, we'll just, uh, I don't know, fault's still on the line, but, you know, we could ask that, we have something electronic for you to to review.
Yes, sir, I'm still online, and developer is, is working on a, uh, a full presentation to bring to council uh, including, you know, any electronic, uh, information, he has some commercials, he has some stuff, he's working on that. There's been no additional plans submitted to me after we, uh, did have a quick review of planning and design. Um, and there's been nothing, it, there's been no traffic studies, there's been no, um, concrete plans, there's been no engineers reports yet. Um, I think the first, you know, first step is the rezoning of this prior to, uh, the investment of our community and our resources, and even the developers' resources, is having this rezoning, either approved or denied prior to, um, any investment made by our community or the developer.
So we'll get it to you for, uh, for next week, we'll have it up to you. Thank you.
Director Riley, Director Costello, do you have anything?
I have nothing further, no.
I have nothing tonight either, thank you, House President.
All right, thanks, everybody, we can adjourn.
Thanks. Thanks, guys, good night.
Thanks.